Action items. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes to generate 23rd, 2023 meeting. I move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Standing because I wasn't here, so that's okay.
The minutes are approved with one abstention. Action item 1B1 on the policy calendar is a resolution to approve the award of the Jonas E. Salk scholarships. I call upon Assistant Vice Chancellor Ian James to provide further background.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Sunshine, on behalf of Chancellor Matos Rodriguez, I am pleased to present to the committee for approval the following students who have been selected for the 2023 Jonas E. Salk Award Scholarship. The Jonas E. Salk Award Scholarship was created in 1955 to honor then CD College graduate Jonas E. Salk, who went on to develop the first anti-polio vaccine. The scholarships are awarded to students who have been accepted in U.S. Medical School or Graduate School in pursuit of an M.D., a D.O., or a Ph.D. in biomedical research. Eli Burglass Queen College, Amanda Brand Macaulay Honors College at Queens College, Heim Janahi at Brooklyn College, Adriana Gagarnovsky at Hunter College, Abby Herr Kami at Brooklyn College, Kelvin Kelly Makar Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College, Pamela Lebigrom at Hunter College, and Tammy Yang at Hunter College. I present the eight awards to you for approval.
I thank you, Assistant Vice Chancellor. I move the approval of action item 1B1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I've got to say, of all the prominent alums of CUNY, Jonas Salk is one of the greats and great tradition and wonderful announcement. Any other, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstentions? No. Obviously passed unanimously. No more action items on the policy calendar. I now move to the information items on the agenda. 2A, report by the Vice Chancellor. I call on Vice Chancellor Denise Maybank to give her report.
Thank you, Trustee Sunshine. So we've reached that most exciting time of year that punctuates the accomplishments of the university through our students, faculty, and staff. This is the time of graduation, commencement, acknowledgement of scholarships, and of awards. And so my report today is designed to bring to your attention some of the distinguished work of Student Affairs and to highlight a few of our hidden treasures. The Central Office of Student Affairs Project for Return and Opportunity in Veterans Education, or PROVE, has received one of two inaugural $100,000 Community Catalyst Awards from the Federal Department of Veterans Affairs in their Veterans Experience Office. Under the leadership of Liora Shidovski, PROVE's proactive, high-contact approach responds to student veterans' transition needs by promoting student-to-student connections to reduce social isolation and create a sense of community and belonging. PROVE also provides screening and referral for advocacy, mental health, legal, housing, and other services through the social work interns from the Silberman School of Social Work. PROVE is currently active on eight CUNY campuses. Students from the Ernesto Malave Leadership Academy, led by Ahmad Osman, competed in the IREX Global Solutions Sustainability Challenge, which is a virtual exchange initiative that supports leadership and workforce development for college students globally to build mutual understanding by addressing the world's big problems while cultivating innovators and change-makers in sustainability. Students collaborate and develop solutions for global challenges in their communities. Our team, Team Gray Solar, composed of students from CUNY and Al Balcar Applied University in Jordan, designed the gray water treatment system that will support Jordanian and American citizens who live in rural areas to have access to sustainable and clean water. The team was selected as one of the five finalist teams for Cohort Eight to present at the Virtual Global Business Expo. The news here, though, is that last year, the team in which CUNY participated came in fourth in the competition. They wouldn't stand for that. This year, when you think about win, place, or show, they came in third, receiving one of the three monetary awards, which will be used to support some of the members taking online classes. They showed up and showed out. The Malave Leadership Academy provides an advanced level of co-curricular opportunities for students who have demonstrated extraordinary leadership on their campuses and in their communities. Participants experience state-of-the-art multicultural leadership education and an emphasis, with an emphasis on service and advocacy. CUNY is home and home court to the United States Olympic and Paralympic Committee's 2022 Coach of the Year. Our Director for Inclusive and Adaptive Sports, Ryan Martin, has been honored with this distinction. Ryan was nominated by the National Wheelchair Basketball Association and then selected as the national winner among the finalists from all sports. And of course, we have the ongoing and renewed support for many of our programs, such as City Foundation, which has revitalized its support for the Black Male Initiative to support the program's efforts in increasing graduation and enrollment rates for students of underrepresented populations, the FAR Fund continuing to support our disability programs project reach, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation continuing to support our CUNY College Connect Peer Mentor Program. These accomplishments are a credit to and only a small representation of the award-winning work of an outstanding staff of people, of an astounding staff of people serving our over 230,000 awe-inspiring students. Awe-inspiring students deserve amazing programs, and we seek to engage staff members who are committed to the success of our students and who, through their commitment, their talent, and their skills, bring good things to life at CUNY. I hope they all will remember the words of Jonas Salk. "The reward for work well done is the opportunity to do more." Chairperson Sunshine, that completes my report.
Wonderful report. Any questions or comments from committee?
I attended the tail end of the disruption presentation on Friday, which was put together by the Office of Academic Affairs, and I was hoping if we can get that, though, the information from that event to be shared with this committee, because I think it's great that we always hear about positive things, but our students are struggling. And I think it's important that this particular committee be aware of how they struggle and possibly be involved with developing policy that can address it. So, I mean, as a faculty member, I think one of the hardest things to listen to was the fact when, you know, students, Salamatu was basically saying, students say they can't find their faculty on campus, even though I've given my students my email, my office number, my cellphone number, and tell them where my office hours are and available to them at any time, and end up getting text messages in the middle of the night. But again, I think it was, it was, it was really fascinating to hear what students had to say. I know that faculty and staff are going to be sharing as well. So again, I think that's, that's important to get to this committee, that information. I thank the Office of Academic Affairs for, for putting that together, and I just wish I'd seen the whole thing.
For...
Oops, sorry. Can you hear me when I talked about those things?
Yes. For the benefit of those of you who don't know what he's talking about, we all recognize there's been significant learning disruption, obviously, as a result of COVID and the years for our students who are just now matriculating in high school of learning online and so, without much training, obviously. So we have put together a working group of some of our finest faculty and leaders across the system to develop an ongoing educational opportunity. And the first piece of that was to hear from the students directly. What are your experiences? What are you feeling that's particularly challenging? Yeah, my only concern was I wish more students would have participated, so we'll, we'll definitely need to do some more of that, but we really try not to presume that we know. I mean, we see the effects and we can draw conclusions from them, but there's no substitute for actually hearing directly from the students. So that was just point number one in a very, and there's been other pieces that came before it, but this is a very directed and concerted effort to really try and raise our academic game to very specifically respond to the challenges on the ground. I'm glad you found it useful.
Any other...
Yeah. I do agree with the propos and also with Professor Hernandez. The students have been, of course, we've been struggling, and even right now, when you look at the campuses, students are advocating, they are demanding different things, so the struggle is here, and I think it's very visible right now. So I think it's very important that when we collect this information, and I know we were in the planning committee, it's going to be reviewed, different solutions are going to be found, but I think this committee is very crucial in making a lot of these things happen, because when we think about it, a lot of the solutions that the students need, a lot of the times, they have to be found in policy, because a lot of the rules that are implemented right now, some of them do not suit the present time. A lot of documents have to be updated and a lot of conversations need to be had. So I think I'm really happy this committee is meeting now, today, and I think it's important that we meet more frequently and we start really planning and talking about how we will answer what the students need, the things that they are really loud about and the things that they don't necessarily say out loud.
Well, I, for one, and I think I speak for the committee, welcome this committee doing more and being more engaged in these very serious issues, which are omnipresent in society, not only in CUNY, it's a microcosm of that, I think. So I, you know, I don't know how to, I don't know who I'm looking at to, you know, how to...
Facilitate.
Put some teeth on that, but, you know, to the extent that this committee can play a bigger role, we'd be happy to. My...
Yeah, agreed.
Well said, Mr. Vice Chair.
May I add something? And I think that also even right now with the financial crisis and CUNY seeking funding and funding being cut, I think one of the things this committee can do is really sit down and talk more about how that affects the students directly and how we address it. If it's a matter of communicating the resources that are available to students, because we know some resources are there they don't know, is there something we can do at this level to address that? Again, there are so many problems, and you're definitely right, Mr. Vice Chair.
Well, I would look to you to show real leadership here.
Oh, I'm here.
You obviously wear many hats here, but the committee couldn't be more welcoming to play a more constructive role or a role at least to air some of what you're talking about at, at the committee level, so.
May I add?
Okay.
I think one of, one of the other things is, once the information is compa... Oh, yes, okay. Once the information is actually compiled, we can certainly share it with the committee, but, you know, it just happened, what, Friday, whatever day it was Friday, so we're, we're hoping to have that information compiled, distribute that, and then talk about how we come together, if that works, Salamatu, to make certain that people know what it is that was experienced that Professor Fernandez was referencing, and then we can talk about how we might move forward from there.
Very good. You know, and, and we want this to move, not to, you know, be studied and task forces and, you know. What you're, what you're talking about is terribly serious, and it's affecting, everybody's affected by it in all of society, but, you know, our students have particular needs in so many cases, and, you know, I've heard lots of examples of this, so it couldn't be more welcome. Okay. Report on CUNY Athletics Conference. I call on President Eens and Linda Kleinbaum to present the report.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you. Good to see you. So Linda and I are here to talk a little bit about athletics and the process that we've been participating in for a new strategic plan for CUNY Athletics. I'm sure you all know that Linda and her group have expertise of doing this kind of work for the university, and they were generous enough to go on this, what I would call, great adventure, with myself and many others of the community. Before Linda starts, let me say that I was asked probably about a year and a half ago to serve as the president who would be chairing the CUNYAC Athletic, Athletic Presidents' Council, which then morphed into the CUNYAC Athletic Council after some consultation, because we have involved new membership in that group, and it's not just presidents. In many universities, you find that the President, Presidents' Council is presidents-only, but in the case of our situation, we were responding to our consultation conversation where we wanted to include, of course, the faculty and the students. So I can, Linda will probably talk a little bit about some of the nuts and bolts and the logistics, but let me say that first and foremost, the thing that was most important to us is to make sure we're building community, that we continue our ongoing consultation, and that it's very collaborative. As you all know, we have a mixture of programs in CUNY, in CUNYAC, that are Division III programs, Division II programs, and community college athletic programs, all of which belong to different governing bodies. So we have participated over, and Linda, keep me honest, over at least a year, I think, a process of consultation that has brought us to this point where we have our CUNY Athletics Strategic Plan. It will be a living plan. It is a plan that identifies low-hanging fruit and high-hanging fruit, as it looks at how we can be more successful with taking care of our scholar athletes, because we know that athletics and scholarship goes hand in hand, and it is a huge retention and student success tool that we want to continue to actualize. You all know that we have many, many multiple-sport superstars in CUNY, and that we have very active campus life around athletics, but we also have some, like I said, low-hanging fruit, some opportunities, some challenges, all of which need to continue to move along. So Linda, how did I do? Was that my homework?
You did funny job.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up and do the rest of it? As I was... And so I wanted to pick up on something that you said earlier, which was, you were talking about awe-inspiring students deserve, and this is about what awe-inspiring students deserve in terms of a holistic, robust athletic experience. So we'll talk to you, and this comes from the stakeholders. ISLG facilitated input from multiple stakeholders, and that's what you're going to see as we move through this. So what does it take, oops, am I not usually... What does it take to have a successful athletics program that appeals to students and meets CUNY's goal of offering a well-rounded educational experience? Well, we identified six goal areas, so it takes strong leadership and organizational structure, and President Eens talked about the changes that are being made in that regard, a commitment to student-athlete success, fiscal sustainability, safe and accessible athletic facilities, an inclusive and diverse program, and strong community engagement and brand. The plan provides a blueprint for getting there, and then it's up to CUNY to, using a sports metaphor, step up to the plate to achieve these goals. So how did we go about developing this strategic plan? First, we looked to identify the unique issues that affect CUNY. We did this through literature review, we viewed previous consultant reports, and we also developed a little survey that was sent out to CUNY schools, and we looked at strategic plans for athletics from other universities. We then held nine workshops across a wide swath of stakeholders, CUNYAC staff, athletic directors, faculty, FARs, students, academic and student affairs staff, compliance staff, and coaches, and those initially were to focus on what's typically called swaths, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And then we held seven follow-up workshops to address strategies. What were ways to take advantage of opportunities and strengths and to minimize threats and weaknesses? After that, we took a look at data, looking to support what we were told in these workshops, as opposed to just assuming that what people think is actually happening is happening, so we looked at financial data and other things to validate findings. We then identified indicators of success, which would be measured over the five years of the plan, to see if, in fact, CUNY is succeeding at bringing the program into a stronger place. We prioritize solutions based on the degree of effort that would be required and the impact we believe they would have, and then we're finalizing the plan. So this says it's been refined and finalized. In fact, any input we get from this group will be incorporated into the plan, and then it will be finalized. So what is the plan's structure? It has six goal areas, as I mentioned at the beginning, and first, it offers a summary of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats from the workshop in each goal area, the strategies to address those swaths, and we have prioritized them, again, according to impact and effort. Strategies, we also indicated, where possible, who we would suggest be part of a committee or team to try and implement tactics to bring those strategies about, and then we've developed measures of success. Let me just say this about measures of success. They often don't exist, and so you've got to create a baseline, and then you have to create goals for every year of the program. We've suggested some. It's not necessarily the be-all and end-all of indicators. As committees get formed, the committees can decide the best way to measure success. The plan that, the full plan will also include an appendix with all the supporting analytics that we did. So this is a very short summary of what we found in our analysis. So the first area was organizational leadership and structure. I won't go through all of these. I believe the copy of this presentation was in the minutes and other things you received for the meeting, but it's clear that you need a more formalized structure of roles and responsibilities, especially now that you have a new CUNYAC Academic Athletic Council and also one for CUNYAC, so people don't get confused on who's responsible for what and what their, what everybody's role and responsibility is. The other thing that came up across many goal areas is the notion of you need full-time coaches. You don't have them, you're unique in that weakness, and it is critical for a successful program. Literature, everybody agrees on that issue. The problem is, it's much more expensive than part-time. So what we've suggested is establishing roles and responsibilities, org charts, and coming up with a standard staffing model for athletics, and generally improving communication. Student athlete success, we had hoped, by looking at data, that we'd be able to show that student athletes succeed across a number of academic benchmarks, more than sort of than a control group or, or students not involved in athletics, sort of much like your ASAP community. In fact, what we found was they have higher graduation rates, but there's not any significant improvement over other academic measures. If there had been, we would have suggested a funding model like ASAP has, but we weren't able to find that. That's something that we say from year to year, you should continue to track. Very low participation at the CUNY schools in athletics, and what you don't know is chicken or egg. Is there low participation because you don't do a good job recruiting, you don't have great facilities, or is there low participation because it's a commuter school and there's just less interest? I suspect it's more the former, but, you know, we suggest at some point a survey, and that will help clarify that. Yes?
I can hold it to the end, but I was wondering if there was a differentiation between Queens College and Colleges Staten Island being Division II?
Yes, Division II. So we'll get to that. The Division II schools, we did some data analysis on those schools.
I'm sure they're all shocked I'm asking about Staten Island, but go ahead.
So the division schools, needless to say, do better, and they're funded better, although it was interesting that they still, relative to their counterparts in Division II, they have less money to offer for scholarships than the other Division II schools, so they also have some competitive disadvantages. But certainly, largely, when we talk about the weaknesses and threats, it's Division III and the community colleges. So comparatively low participation rates and the absence of full-time coaches, trainers, and other resources, of course, negatively impact the experience. We suggest increasing recognition of student athletes in ensuring successful wraparound services for student athletes, evaluating and optimizing the recruitment of student athletes. Right now, very little goes to funding recruitment in this area, and then evaluating and funding critical resources. So fiscal management and sustainability was probably the largest topic that got raised in these strategic workshops. The notion that there is not fiscal sustainability that many schools rely on, resources that you can't count on from year to year, they're not always, they're not, it's not tax levy money typically, so they feel very much like the program from year to year is always, is out of balance, insufficient. So this was noted as just generally across the board, and CUNY Athletics is funded well below the national and regional averages, and, and there are, while there are opportunities for new revenues, this is really more about systemically evaluating how to fix funding for athletics. Identify, oops, sorry. So identify ways to create a more stable funding stream, explore opportunities for new revenues, and one opportunity is creating a shared procurement model when a CUNY buy gets implemented. That will create a platform for buying sports equipment holistically and saving money in that way. Facility is an infrastructure. My guess, as you all know, that that's a mixed bag. Some facilities are in good condition, some facilities are not. Schools often have to travel for practice or for games. The travel is often in vehicles that they don't feel safe in. It could add tremendous amount of time to an otherwise packed student agenda. So this is, we have created a chart, and you can see it in the full report, that compares the school's perceptions of the acceptability of their on-campus facilities and the acceptability of the off-campus facilities that they use when they have to use off-campus facilities.
I'm sorry, this started my belly wick here.
I believe.
If, I'd encourage you just to look at, again, when they were a Division III school, they actually paid for some of the coaches by, they have a wonderful bubble facility there, tennis bubble. It was the first P3 that CUNY actually had on campus, and they used the revenue from that to pay some coaches salaries to bring them on full-time, and that's sort of...
So the rental revenue, so...
Yeah, rental revenue. So that, some, you said some of our facilities are great, some are not so great. The ones that are great, if they could enhance the revenue... The ones that are great, if they could enhance the revenue and kick it back into the sports facilities instead of the general fund, that would be something that was done as a model out there.
So you probably won't be surprised to hear some schools put the revenue back into athletics. Some schools do not. And they use the revenue for, for instance, the budget exercise, savings exercises that schools are going through now. So it's a mixed bag in that re, and, and that's one of the suggestions is to consider transferring facility rentals to the program. Let them stay with the program.
Part of the P three, they have to, the people that run the tennis center have to maintain the facility. So it doesn't come out of the.
It's a management company?
Yeah, it's a management company.
That's a, that's a nice, a nice Benny then.
Yeah, see, if we could maybe replicate that, if it's applicable, of course, the, the system, that'd be great. I don't know if it is or not, but.
Yeah, well, a lot of the schools have beautiful pool facilities. Some of them rent them, some of them don't. Usually the rental they keep in, you know, the, the administration of the rental is in-house, which adds another burden to already overburdened coaches and other staff on. So, but, so it requires money to do the, that kind of sophisticated management. But it's a great idea if we could, if we could get the sustainable funding model, then I think we could do that.
Are we gonna just chime in?
I'm sorry.
Cause I would.
For a collegiate athlete, believe it or not, can't don't smile.
Concerning that point, I have a big concern. I'm on, I'm on the faculty advisement committee as representative for my college. And a guy showed up telling me that City College is gonna rent their gym to the Knicks for $10 million for the next 10 years. And it makes me wonder if that's gonna have an impact on student access. And then I've heard that other colleges rent their fields. And I'm in a, you know, I'm, my, my, my community college is in a factory building, multiple factory buildings. We, we have no field and we are interested in possibly, I mean, I, I, I'm just concerned that in the, in the drive to monetize the, the colleges, that, you know, it's gonna affect student access to athletics. But one, one thing that I'm gonna pitch to the faculty group as an advisement idea is a CUNY-wide sort of renting, rental schedule setup so that, you know, a school like mine who would like to have a soccer team, I keep pushing cricket, by the way, but, cause I have large East Asian population, that they could have a home field, you know, and utilize, and not have to pay rentals to do it. So just thought I'd, you know, chime that in as long as we're talking about facilities. But I, it's, it's disconcerting to find out that, you know, and the president can actually cut a $10 million deal. I, I don't know that coming to the finance committee, but I haven't heard about it.
So many facilities don't get utilized as much as we think they do.
Okay, well, I, I know it's the biggest gym in the city, supposedly it's the second largest gym in the city. And that's, and I'm, I'm fine if it hasn't, doesn't have an impact, hurrah for City College. But if a kid wants to play one-on-one and he's gotta defer to, you know.
To Jalen Budson.
Yeah, exactly. The third string, wherever it is.
At least they're winning.
Then have a, yeah. And look, I'm a Knicks fan. I mean, I've said this, so it's not, I'm not against the Knicks, I'm not against the college, but it's a concern, that's all.
Well taken. We obviously craving funds for all kinds of things. And if they're getting a great rental fee, I would be sympathetic. Yeah, but I didn't know about that. And, uh, look, I, my reaction to, I mean, you're not finished yet, but it's just, you know, it's not been a priority, system-wide. That, that to me is so clear and it's a hodgepodge. And look, some of the campuses have great facilities. It's the uniqueness of, you know, the geography, history, et cetera. But my general reaction is we can and need to do better when it comes to athletics. That's my simple takeaway, but keep going.
Sharing facilities.
Right, so in, in the facility discussion, the main report, there's quite a number of recommendations about, you know, especially now that we've done this, this matrix, you can see schools that are in close proximity to each other and one, where one has a really good facility, you know, the sister school ought to be able to partner with them. And if there's a rental, there certainly ought to be like a favored nation kind of rental agreement where if you're a sister school, it's, it's not the same as when you're renting to the Knicks, for instance. So there are a lot of recommendations there. Some, some of the fields and things don't even meet the requirements for the sport and yet they're still used for things like practice. It's, it's definitely an area where there's a lot of low-hanging fruit that could be picked and make things better. Integrity and inclusion, what we heard is interest, not surprisingly, divisions two schools, you know, are looked at as being better than everyone else. The community colleges feel very disrespected vis-à-vis their, their athletic program. From a diversity point of view, the program is very diverse. We think that if CUNIAC would have a dedicated person that focuses on the community college athletics program, that would go a long way to help. And, and then there are other issues to be evaluated like pay equity. We found that head coaches of men's teams get paid higher than head coaches of women's teams. So.
Surprise.
Don't ask me, I'm not, um, so anyway, that kind of pay equity evaluation needs to be looked at.
So is that with the full-time coaches or is that for part-time coaches? Cause Staten Island, I've been told that's definitely the case with the women coaches versus the men's coaches and those are full-time positions.
I don't know, I'll have to look. We have the data, but I don't remember what they.
Are you talking about the gender of the coach or the gender of the team?
Gender of the coach was the specific, but generally the.
Yeah.
It follows the form, not by women.
Yeah. And the last area that, goal area was community engagement and brand. And there are certainly many, many opportunities to increase both the visibility, the import, the knowledge of, like when games are happening, it should be on your first page of your website whenever a game is happening. It doesn't have to be a championship game, any game. And lots of different ways with merchandising and everything to encourage participation. And we have many strategies along that line.
Can I chime in on this one?
Sure.
Since I, I, I do a college radio show.
Perfect.
And I've been wanting to cover our, you know, our basketball games or whatever, any athletics at the college, but we struggled with resources and time. But I'm, I'm told that most of these campuses do cover, have some sort of coverage of their, of their games. And I don't see why we couldn't have a CUNY network or take advantage of CUNY TV somehow or some version of it or, or CUNY web TV or whatever it is. Because, yeah, I look, you know, I mean, I don't know anything about basketball, but I could be the color guy. Courtside.
That's exactly the kind of strategies.
So there you go.
It's exactly the kind of strategies that we think need to be thought about.
Yeah, I'm gonna pitch that to the faculty too.
Good. Measures of success. So the way the process should work is each goal area should have indicators, measures of success. You establish a baseline now for what those indicators are. You develop what tactics you're gonna implement over the next year. And you set your goal for what you expect, the, how you expect those tactics to impact the baseline, right? So presumably it gets better each year over the five years and then you do another five years. So that's how the process should work. We have here just some of the measures of success that we have suggested. They can really be anything that CUNY chooses, but you need to set goals. You need to stretch in a strategic plan. You need to feel like you're not where you wanna be and here are the things that can get us there. Oops, pushed the wrong one. He said, the one thing he told me, never push that button. So the bottom button, never push it.
One thing that I didn't see on there about fiscal, it probably won't surprise anybody, but I've been, I've been told that getting officials paid through the CUNY first system is a nightmare.
The refs, I've.
And they're talking, you know, again, my, my folks are asking about another system as a way to pay. By the way, another thing that I didn't see on that list and I just wanna chime in.
This is a summary.
I know, I know, but, but I'm just looking at areas, is travel. So.
That's what I was talking about, transportation.
Oh, there you did.
Talk about low-hanging fruit.
Yeah, right.
Your, your, you know, schools are often in equipment that's just not acceptable.
Well, another thing that, yeah, it's not acceptable with a coach driving a van through a rural, state New York road at night in bad weather after a 12-hour day. Yeah, exactly. So one thing that I'm gonna also recommend is that we have some sort of CUNY-wide contract for trap for some sort of coach.
That's exactly what's in this report is a recommendation.
Okay, good.
For a retainer for small buses or whatever.
There's a reason I'm a photographer. I communicate for that.
Okay, so this adds other measures.
Oh, there it is.
He said, there, that's good. I'm not gonna go through all these, but these are ways to measure the success of the program. Again, this is all a summary and the main program goes into, the main strategic plan has a lot more detail. So what's next? We presented already, that first bullet is already old news. We presented to some town hall meetings. We got some additional feedback, which we put into the plan. We are making this presentation and so the hope is that the plan gets published in the late spring, which I guess this is still early spring, so soon. And that the strategies and tactics will start rolling out with, when a new commissioner comes on board sometime in early 2020. And that's our presentation. Any other questions?
You're still good, they haven't started yet.
So how long did it take to come through this?
It took several months. Again, we did stakeholder meetings where, you know, we had a lot of people participating virtually and took notes and got drafts out and comments back. And then we had another set of stakeholder meetings. It was, I mean, we have the dates and the meetings, but it took several months.
Okay, so one thing I'm concerned about is you, you said that you showed that there is a low performance due to funding. The different schools, the different programs are saying that the lack of, there is a lack of funding.
Yep.
And that's why they are not performing well. I know that one.
Not, I'm saying that chicken or egg, you know, isn't that you don't have a lot of kids interested or isn't that, you know, the schools don't support it though?
On that con, okay, on that conversation of sustainable funding sources, one of these funding sources, like you said, non-tax levy funds, which is through an activity fee. So all students who pay tuition out of pocket from what I know at least, they do pay that fee. But has there been an audit of what happened before? Because I am not sure if the expenditure during the pandemic is the same as the expenditure before the pandemic and expenditure now that the pandemic is kind of all over. Because I think that a formal audit of how they've been using their money at these different periods of time may give good insight and good ideas into what the problems are. I see that the committee has used like a feedback approach with all these stakeholders meeting, with all these workshops and these town halls, which is good, getting feedback from who is affected directly. But I think an audit into how the different campuses have been using it will be helpful. Considering that we formed the, the council of presidents become responsible, became responsible of this last summer, I think that's some work that really needs to happen. A formal audit of how these funds were, were spent.
So let me just say this about that, which is that the student fee and the amount that's dedicated to athletics varies significantly from campus to campus. And it's not, under any circumstances, whether it was all going somewhere else or not, it's not enough. But in terms of an audit, there must be an audit group in CUNY. So I wrote it down and I will pass that on as a recommendation.
The reason I'm saying that is that it's still important to know because it's one funding source. And as this committee is thinking about policy and looking at the bigger picture, it would be good to see how these different funding sources affect the outcomes.
So one of the things that came up in the stakeholder groups was a recommendation that CUNY treat athletics the way SUNY does. And SUNY imposes an athletics fee, not as part of a student fee. It's a, it's a specific separate athletics fee that pays for their athletics program at their many, many schools. The, there was not consensus in the stakeholder groups over that idea. So I think we put it in here as something that would require a fair amount of further research and consideration before anything was done.
Yeah, and I think it's very understandable because the situations are different. And again, no one has never, for I have never seen like an audit of how things happen. So like an additional fee, that's just an additional fee. But how are the fees that are already being spent being used? Another thing is, I, I was wondering, cause in the report we see what is going to happen, what the process is. My question is to focus more on the how and really show the actionable steps, focusing on what this committee can do to help. Right? That's the student affairs committee. Like I said earlier, there is so much innovation that we need to make in terms of campus life in general. So I think that looking into that more in-depth and really using this space to make that happen will bring actual great innovation. And I think we shouldn't let that time pass because right now the students are, whether they understand this process or not, they are a little tired of hearing, we're doing a strategic plan process, we're doing another town hall, we're asking questions. Even if we never did it before, the students are feeling like that's what we always do. It's always a process, it's always a year, it's always months. So how do we get out of that and show them action? Instead of saying, this is what we are going to do, this is what we have done with the resources that we have and this is what will emerge from it.
But in fact, this is not a plan done to students. It's not even a plan done for students, it's a plan done by its students. Everything in here requires all stakeholders to come to the table.
I understand because I.
So you mind if I respond? So I, I actually had this conversation with the council recently. Because what I said was, we will only be as effective as the actions we actually take. And so we, of course, are in the process of, of searching for a new executive director slash commissioner. My hope is that the presidents, the athletic directors, right? And all those stakeholders on each campus will get, gather around and we will polarize around some things that are done each semester from the plan. Now, the other thing, everybody knows we're in very, very resource poor times. So the question for many people is how do we move the plan ahead without resources? What are the items on the, in, in the plan that don't really require resources, but will signal productivity? Then not only with the students, the staff, everyone, everyone feels exactly like, I guess what I'm saying is I'm agreeing with you. Everyone feels exactly like what you're saying. But we had to do this first. Now we have to position ourselves to act. And that's what we're hoping will happen in the fall.
And as I said, there is some low-hanging fruit. Like you could address transportation pretty quickly without it being a big hit on the budget and it will be seen.
It'll be felt.
People will say, someone listened to us and did something about it.
We have a crisis in athletic trainers right now.
There are a number of things where there are just opportunities.
Athletic trainers and officiating officials. You all know that there's a crisis all over the city of lifeguards, a shortage, right? So there's all these places, as Linda mentioned, that if we coordinate and collaborate, we actually can do things the students will feel, right?
No, I, I think your point is excellent. Look, we, we, obviously money is the core of somebody, the problems. The money situation is not gonna get better. And we know that, we've got enough needs on so many levels with money. It's always gonna be an issue at CUNY. Maybe some creativity can help raise unique money, cause you know, everything about athletics is unique and some thought should be put into that. But the low-hanging fruit or things that don't cost real money should be implemented. Like I said before, I don't think this has ever been a real priority, certainly system-wide. And it's frankly, on the record, it's embarrassing. It, it, this is, this is one of the most depressing reports I've heard. It's an excellent.
We found it that way too.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, we should just do better collectively and we can, and I think we will. It's an excellent report.
The governor just put a whole bunch of money into promoting CUNY to do home healthcare workers, DSD, SOBW. home healthcare workers, DSDs, R O B W D D. They can come into that program with life credits, so is there a way to incentivize, you know, we have excellent PT programs, maybe an athletic trainer program, except put system-wide or at certain campuses to, that could then directly feed into the athletic program. I mean, I'm just spitballing here, but that seems, that's worked at other campuses. I have a friend over at Seton Hall who does the same thing. And then there's, then there's an opportunity with lifeguards, if you wanna address that too, you could have life credits for, for basic first aid, skip certification, med certification. So you come into with maybe three to six credits into a community college setting, you're a tenth of the way there.
I, I nominate trustee, our, leadership with, with, with our student rep. I think you, two of you have an excellent perspective on things you know a whole lot of, I didn't realize.
My whole one-game career in college.
One-game career. And the worst thing that could happen is, this is a wonderful report that just goes into the black hole of Calcutta, you know, and nothing ever happens, and we cannot allow that to happen.
Just to touch on the, the point that Sally Matu, which by the way, this is not about athletics now, but this committee is the committee that approves changes to the student activity fees of all the colleges. So if anybody can ask for an audit of student activity fee usage, collection and usage, it's this body. And just to speak for my, my own college, when I sat down with my, the last business guy, and he, you know, is explaining to me what was happening to the fourteen dollars per student they were collecting for, for a college that was not engaging in, in their collegiate athletics, you're right. He brought, you know, one of the things he pointed out to me is that we're, we're collecting money for movie rentals, thirty-five millimeter movie rentals, that's an earmark that they can't get rid of unless they come back here after a student vote. And so they, they manage that money a different way. Not to mention, they show up, in fact, we'll have a budget hearing at the Senate this week, and they'll come in and tell us how they're sitting on one point five million dollars of student activity fees that they couldn't spend. So now we have students that are paying a fee and not getting a service, and it ends up in a fund, which then gets utilized in some other manner that the college association determines. I mean, that's, for me, that, you know, I've just never known any, anybody can get away with that.
We're having a little bit of a time crunch.
Okay, sure.
Finance committee meeting. I deputized two trustees to formally join this group, and to really put some teeth on this, and to report back to us at the very least, but more importantly, to start implementing sort of these things. Okay. All right, I'm gonna move on to our, to the students, reflections from students. It should be the highlight of the, and will be the highlight of the meeting.
As Priya's coming over, in the recognition of accomplishments and consistent with the action you've taken to approve the two thousand twenty-three Salk Award winners, we've invited a former Salk scholarship recipient to share with you what happens for students who are empowered through scholarships, through CUNY, that propel them into the world. Our students showcased today, spotlighted Priya Singh, a graduate of Macaulay Honors College and Hunter College, and a twenty twenty-two Salk awardee. I will tell you, I am peacock proud of Priya as a scholar, as an athlete, and as a compassionate soul and current student at the, what is it, Icahn?
Icahn School.
Icahn School of Medicine at Mount Sinai. So all wrapped up in the person of Priya Singh.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Meibank. Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you for having me here. I wanna say a heartfelt thank you to all of you for the work that you all have been doing for CUNY and for the students. Hearing your conversations in this past hour and just taking it all in means a lot to me as a CUNY alum. And I recognize that there are issues and concerns within the system that have been there for a long time, and the premise of that has to do with money most of the time. But I personally appreciate the discussions you've all been having, and thank you for allowing me to be here in this space and share it with you. I'm really grateful personally for the Salk scholarship, because I come from an immigrant family and a, a low-income family, and medical school is expensive, so anything really goes a long way. And I feel really grateful that I was recognized for the work that I did in undergrad and for the research that I've done. I wanna say now, as a first-year medical student, I really love Mount Sinai, I, I love the education I'm receiving. I've been involved in a ton of shadowing experiences and just really trying to take advantage of all the resources that have been available to me. And I really am thankful to the education I received at Hunter and for the support I received from my advisors and my professors. I think I was really blessed with the support that I got throughout the four years at Hunter. But overall, it's, it's been a really great experience. I'll be going to Japan in the summer to do research for two months. Super excited about that, always wanted to go to Japan. And overall, it's just been an incredible experience for me. That's all I really have to say. Thank you so much for everything you guys are doing.
What are you researching in Japan?
It's mental health-related research. So the core of my project is interviewing folks in Fukushima who were affected by the tsunami and earthquake that hit in two thousand eleven, and they also had the nuclear meltdown in Fukushima. So I'm really interested to see what people have to say about their experience and see what themes come up in those discussions, so, is what I'll be doing.
If you're interested, I could put you in touch with a faculty member that brings Hiroshima survivors to the United States to talk about what that's like.
Yeah.
So let me know, I'll give you my card.
That would be great, thank you, yeah.
Priya's being pretty humble. She is the recipient of a long list of awards throughout the time that she's been at CUNY and even as a high school student. And so she just is an exemplar of the Salk scholarship, and we now have eight more that are coming along. And so I consider Priya part of the hope that we have for what happens at CUNY. And there's a Jonas Salk quote that says, "There is hope in dreams, imagination, and in the courage of those who wish to make those dreams a reality." So embodied is our hope, sitting here with us today.
Well, I, no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn. Second, long favor, this meeting, is it, oh, there's my, I want to give.